Can I have your attention, please? Zoning Board of Appeals for October 1st, 2019 will now come to order. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Crawford? Present. Mr. Naguar?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mrs. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Mr. DeSoto?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
This is the quorum. We'll now continue. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting, September 17th, 2019?
Motion to accept it, right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Ayes?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. The minutes taken. The first case this evening is actually case number 9896, which is actually a case that I'm not going to hear this evening. Twenty-nine Pine Grove Ave., parcel number 055227043. Petitioner Modestin Savenall by his attorney, Stephen O'Malley. Are you with?
Yes.
I'm actually, before you even get started, I'm not even going to hear this case because it's come to my understanding that there's some financial issues with the city and he needs to actually deal with ISD before we're going to hear the case.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I did, Attorney Stephen O'Malley, that was brought to my attention yesterday afternoon when I visited the ISP to make sure the file was in shape for tonight's hearing. And they did hand me a list of citations related to the property for violation of the two-family and one-family occupation. The ISP had stopped ticketing this property when the petition was filed back in July on this. I did file a motion with your Secretary, Ms. Kokas, today. I have a copy here for you, Mr. Chairman.
I have.
I'm asking the board to suspend its rule, to temporarily suspend the move required petition to fail standing citations required to be incurred for the zoning board of appeals.
I already have the petition. I'll take this. I'll put it in the file. I have no intention on suspending that ruling. It's not something that I'm even interested in looking into doing. So with that being said, I'm actually going to send you guys back down to ISD. And until I hear from them that it's cleared up, we won't hear the case.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So that being said, the real first case this evening, holding to my promise, Two Shirley Road, petitioner Lisa Cole, to permit the replacement of a pre-existing non-conforming garage on a lot with less than the required area and frontage and containing an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, having less than the required side yard in the Iowan District, finding that such use is not substantially more detrimental in effect to the neighborhood.
Good evening. Thank you for putting me first.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it. Lisa Cole, I'm the homeowner of Two Shirley Road, and I would like...
Hold on one second.
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is Lisa Cole, and I'm the homeowner of Two Shirley Road, and I would like to replace my garage.
Okay.
Using the existing footing of the cement floor that it is on now.
Do you have? Let me just...
You're still going to use the same garage?
I'm sorry?
No, it will be used as a garage.
Yes. Yeah, oh, it's still going to be a garage. This garage is very old and...
It's been in there.
Yes.
It's still there.
Oh, yeah, no. It's a one-car garage, and I want a little state of garage.
Okay.
So you're not changing the footprint in any way? You're actually going to use the old foundation?
Yeah, the old foundation. And instead of all wood from the bottom up, they're going to put in eighteen or twenty-four inches of cinder block to help with rodent control. And I've asked them to bring the height of the garage down. I don't need all that space up there. So it'll actually be lower in height.
More even with the coat, fifteen-foot height. How high is it going to be?
The garage itself?
The garage, yeah.
I don't know. It'll be smaller than what it is now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was originally built so there could be, like, storage in the steeple part.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's more like a shed, and I don't need it. I just need it for my garage, for my car.
All right. All right.
Any other questions of the board?
None.
No questions here and there at third and none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing that there are no questions, I'm going to open the floor for anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition. Is there anybody else here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to close the hearing for those in favor of this petition. Is there anybody here in opposition to this petition? Anybody here in opposition to the petition? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to close it for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant the petition.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. DeSoto?
Yes, to grant.
Petition is granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, sorry for last time.
No worries. I hope you have a great evening.
You too. Thank you. The next case this evening is fourteen Hood Street, case number 9882. Petitioner John Messer by his attorney Keith Schutzer.
Kenneth Schutzer.
Yep.
May I have a approach?
Yeah, hold on one second. To permit the alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming two-and-one-half-story family residence on a lot containing forty-eight hundred and twelve square feet in the R4 Apartment House District Class II. To permit its use as a three-family dwelling, finding that such use is not substantially more detrimental in effect to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is attorney Kenneth Schutzer with offices at 152 Lineway in Massachusetts. I'm here this evening, and I'm just going to give you a little brief chronology of why I'm here. This matter was last before the board on May the 21st, at which time my client, Mr. Messer, did not have counsel. The board unfortunately didn't have all the information that we have with us this evening, and it was an appeal taken from a determination of this board. After discussion with the city solicitor, Mr. Lamanna, the matter went to court and was remanded back to this armed board for further hearing on the additional information, as well as the plan for parking that we have presented and should be with your package. That being said, I'm just going to give you a little more information here. This originally started because the architect, Mr. Lemus, had spoken with and requested of Mr. Donovan an opinion as to what he thought they could do with the property. He wasn't sure. He was unfamiliar with it. And Mr. Donovan made two decisions. I have a copy of that. If I can just, can I just hand it to the chair? It said in essence that it was his opinion that the structure's legal use is a two-family dwelling, and it was constructed in 1925. He then goes on to say, though, "A search of the records available to this department does not show any permits to change the use of the structure from a three to a two." So he understood it was a three, but he made a determination it was a two, but there were no permits that were present. And I can vouch for that. There was really nothing in the records of the building department which reflect any history of what's occurred. So what we did is we went to and tried to find if there was any records available. And the only records that we could find is that there was, in the legal department, these are two, there was something from the assessor's office. And in the assessor's office, they found an indication that back in, it looks like nineteen eighty-four, March of eighty-four, when they went there, they determined that there were three units. Interestingly enough, the second floor was gas, and the third floor was oil. It also goes on to indicate, on the second page, and I took the liberty of highlighting it, that the house was built in 1910. The reason that I believe that's important is because, sorry, I'm all over paper here, but is that my understanding is that zoning came into effect in Lynn in 1925. Now, whether it's important or not, whether this is a pre-existing non-conforming use or not, is even, is lessened because the district that this is in permits multi-family homes. So the lapse in, discontinuance argument that sometimes will come up doesn't apply unless the zoning district...
That's my last decision.
Unless the zoning district had changed to only allow a one- or two-family. The other thing that we found was from a more recent assesses, and this goes back to, it's like nineteen, no, 2003. I have some more copies of those, if I can provide them to the board, which further indicate that it was built in 1910, and it was a three-family. So I guess arguably, the question is, should it even be here? And by that I mean, if in fact it was built as a three-family in 1910, the zoning district in which it's located permits multi-family, then the bigger question is, maybe because of the letter that was originally drafted by Mr. Donovan, there would be no need to be present. Now, the special services people have gone down there since, and they've determined the following, that no structural change has to be made to the building at all. Structurally, it conports with all of the building requirements, except that today, any three-family that's been designated as a three-family requires two things. It requires it be sprinkled, which we're going to do, and it requires that it be alarmed, which we're going to do. I would argue that to do those two things would improve the building, improve the safety, and at the same time provide a third unit. I also took the liberty of reading the decision, and there's some questions regarding the current use of Hood Street. What's on Hood Street now? We determined that there are fourteen one-families, eight two-families, and six three-families. The other factor that is important, and I, here I go with some more information, is that I have a copy of the zoning matrix, which permits by right a one-family, a two-family, or a structure that has more than two-family, which would be designated as an apartment. And those are all permitted uses, which don't require special permits. The other thing I'm going to pass out is just the definitions. The definition of this apartment house under section 5.1.1 indicates a dwelling for more than two families under one roof. This would be a threes. The other factor that was interesting, and I discussed this with Mr. Lamanna, is that the definition under 5.111, which talks about a two-family, and the definition of a two-family is a detached dwelling designed for and occupied by two families. So what Mr. Lamanna and I discussed was, when the house was originally built, was it designed for two families or a three? Since there have been no changes structurally to the building, and since the building has three separate units with three separate bedrooms, kitchens, heating systems, then the argument is that it was designed as a three, and therefore doesn't default to a Now, the other thing that I learned from reading the decision of the early award that heard this, is it was a desire to comply with the today's parking requirement, which would be one-half spaces per unit, and by doing that and by supplying a plan, we have now parking for the five necessary vehicles all off-street. And there's a, I think you have a large plan, but maybe if you want this larger one?
I'd like the lower one, actually.
The lower one is good enough. Okay. Here, wait a second.
Would you have a parking plan for all of us?
You know something? I submitted them, and I was told that they were going to be provided to, initially packets, because when I talked to Jamie Surule, we sent it to her, and she indicated to us that it would be included in your packet. I don't mean to...
I can give it printed, but not for...
Oh. Well, I have a big one, and that one is right here, and I apologize. I was at the bottom, just to see. So historically, it is our position that it was built as a three. Historically, it's our position that it has always been a three, that any provision with regards to the lapsing of use does not comply because it doesn't lapse into a use which is not permitted today. You know, the whole concept of grandfathering is that when zoning changes, it's important that it complies with today's zoning. But today's zoning in that zoning district allows for a three-family. The question therefore is, in terms of a determination, is it substantially more detrimental? Clearly, it's been, clearly there are six other three-families. Clearly, we are improving the structure, and the only reason, if it's important, the only reason that it hasn't historically been continued, because there have been periods where the third floor hasn't been used, is the then-owner of the property could not afford to bring it up to code. And that's what we're here to do, which we're here to make this a useful, tax-based, a tax-profited three. It has always been a three. It can't really be a two, because it was never designed as a two. I've discussed this with Billups, with Mr. Lamanna, who've supported having this matter brought back before this board. And I've also had the opportunity of speaking with the board counselor, Mr. Hogan, who is here, who I believe has written a letter, but I believe his presence is probably more important than a letter, who tells me that also Mr. Seer, the council president, who if not tied up, would also be in support of this petition. It's my understanding, unless there's somebody here in opposition, it's my understanding that all of the neighbors that he has spoken to are so pleased to see that the street is being improved, or the work that's being done, and bringing this building back up to code.
Have there really been taxes paid on a three-family?
The taxes have been paid up until 2003.
On a three-family?
As a three-family. And I think that's in some of the material.
How long have you owned the property?
Since October.
Since October? Have you paid taxes on a three-family since October or a two-family?
As a two-family.
Where did you purchase it as a two-family?
Yes, sir.
So is it a two-family or a three-family?
When I purchased the home, I bought it as a two-family.
Okay. So...
He understood.
So we're done representing it as a three, then, because it's a two now? It always has been a two, and it's been taxed as a two. And you've paid taxes as a two. You'd like to make it a three. So I have a lot of trouble with you referencing it as a three, and that it should remain as a three. It's a two. You'd like to make it a three. Correct?
No. Well, the answer is correct, but I would suggest to you that the materials that I provided to you indicate that it had been taxed as a three. In 2003, for some reason, it was taxed as a two, but it doesn't, the taxing mechanism doesn't change the zoning. The zoning is controlled through the building department, through the special services department. You know, the opposite argument oftentimes is made, because I've been paying taxes as a three, and therefore, but that's not, the criteria is, when he purchased it, he thought he was buying a three-family. He went down to find out what he had to do, spoke to Mr. Donovan. Mr. Donovan made a determination that it was a two, but in his own letter, he indicates that he doesn't know how it went from a three to a two. And that's what it said. So I would like you to appreciate that at some point, not only was the building department seeing it as a three, but it was taxed as a three. And obviously, if the board is willing to allow the board to make a determination that it's not substantially more detrimental, it will then be taxed as a three again, which historically has been. It's been taxed as a three longer than it's been taxed as a two. The concept of belief was it was a three. He was advised, I think, that it was something other than that, but I don't think that the advice or the fact that it's currently being taxed defies the use.
Are you saying that he thought he was buying a three-family?
That's what his realtor told him. And it wasn't until he went to get the necessary permits to upgrade the third floor that he asked for an opinion. And it was that opinion that then led to his filing of the application. I think if all these materials had been present to provide to Mr. Donovan, he may not have written the letter. But the other problem is this, is that the records, the billing records have no information whatsoever as to the history of the building. The only information we have is from the assessor's office, which we found in the legal department, and somehow it gravitated to them. I spoke with Mr. Lamanna. Mr. Lamanna agrees with my interpretation, but that's not the issue either. It's this board's province to decide whether in fact redesignating this as a three-family is more detrimental. It's my position that it's not only not more detrimental, it is an improvement. It allows a building which has fallen into disrepair to be upgraded, and the upgrading has already started, in order to allow Mr. Messer the opportunity to live there as well. I'm here to field any questions, but I just want the board to know that we spent a lot of time trying to determine as best we could the history of this structure. And the history that we found was that it was in fact a three-family. It was taxed as a three-family. And it was taxed up until it looks like 2003. When they went through it in 2000, and through the building department's own records and the assessor's records, it reflected three units. It reflected two bedrooms in each unit. It reflected full facilities in each unit. It reflects that no construction has to be done to retrofit it from to a three-family. It's already there. It's just that it hadn't been used. And somebody probably went, and I'm speculating now, and asked for an abatement, asked that it be re-designated as a two, because they weren't using it as a three. But the fact that they decided that they didn't want to be taxed as a three doesn't turn it into or morph into a lesser use.
But that's your opinion?
That is clearly, I argue...
That is correct. That's right.
And so you're saying that happened in 2003? Because this that you provided us here is dated 21302.
I thought it was 2002, not 2003.
No, no, 21302, yeah. That's the date.
Okay.
Or 61702, I don't remember.
I gave you a lot of, which one?
This was the one that you wrote.
Yeah.
Just the one I saw. Yes, right. It says a three-family, and the date on there is 61702. Last review was 21302 or something.
Yeah.
Oh, two, yeah.
Oh, two, not oh-two. So my position is that somehow in '03, it was re-designated. And generally, that only happens when somebody comes in and files for an abatement and says, "I don't want to be taxed for something that I'm not using." And if I'm not using it...
Whose document is this?
That came from the, that came...
The assessor.
We got that in the letter, or is this the assessor company?
Assessor.
And as, so we found whatever we could get our hands on that would give us some historical overview of the history of this property. But it's not, it's not that we're asking for permission to change a use. It's our position that it is a three-family.
Well, you know, that's your, again, that's your opinion. That's why you're here, because it's our call on this one.
Oh, that's, that's... Right. I sat on your, for fourteen years I was on the board, so I truly realize that if I'm overspeaking my position, I'm just trying to be as persuasive as I can. I try to provide you with as much information as I can, from a way that I think is justified.
The bottom line was, someone didn't do due diligence when your client purchased the property.
Right. Yeah, they should, they should have done what I'm doing now, back then, before he bought it.
Because, you know, just because it's a financial hardship.
I'm not saying, I'm not even saying, I'm not using that as...
Well, that came up before. It was a financial hardship.
That's not, that's not the criteria that I think holds any water. The fact that he made a mistake, the fact that he thought it was, the fact that he may not be able to use it financially is not before this board. You know, the criteria that we're expressing is, was it, is it more detrimental? And it's our position that it conports, and it's our position that it has always been. And the fact that it hasn't been used doesn't put it in the category of a lapse, because there's a provision within your bylaw that talks about a lapsing use. But lapsing uses on pre-existing non-conforming structures talk about a change in the zoning district that no longer make it a legal use. It is a legal use. There's nothing in where that structure is located that prohibits a three-family from a use perspective. And that's, and that's from, you know, from the zoning table. So as I said to you, and I didn't mean to be prescient, I'm not even sure what put us here. What put us here was the reading of that letter by his architect, thinking before he spoke to attorney, that the appropriate vehicle would be to file an appeal. And he did that. So he's now within the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals. I'm suggesting that through the additional due diligence that we did, that arguably it need not have been here. And if it is, and because it's here, for whatever reason, you have the authority, and I can't take that away. The only way that would ever occur was if this gets, goes back to court, and the court reviews us de novo. I'm trying to avoid that. I'm trying to say that we're not going to change the building from the outside or the inside, other than upgrading structurally the building, putting in the necessary sprinkler system that they asked us to do, putting in the alarm system, which at expense we wished to do, and also, and I'm not sure this is an issue either before the board, is increase the tax base. Because when we do that, the building now is worth more. It's being based now upon the fact that it was dilapidated, that there was only two families were using it. But I think the other part that's important, and I said it before, and I'm repeating myself, is the reason this went from the three-family that was used for it to a two is because the then-owner most likely didn't want...
But again, you know, we've heard this again, Mr. Chairman. It's your opinion. It's not fact. We don't know what happened.
No, except, I'm not saying it's...
We don't know. This could have been an illegal three for years.
Some of the actual facts are that it is a two-family now. You know, the schools are overcrowded. On-street parking is a nightmare. There's, you don't have the adequate off-street parking, according to this drawing.
They're, they're...
They're not legal spaces. They're illegal spaces, so it's...
I was advised that they were legal.
They're not.
They're not.
They're not. So those are some of the facts, and it was denied because of those reasons the first time, and you're standing now back in front of us...
Well, I was here the first time, so I...
With no new information, looking to make it a three-family house for what purely seems to be the fact of money. You want to rent it. You purchased it thinking it was a three. It's really a two, and you want to make it a three.
Can I just make one last statement?
Hold on. When I'm done.
You do, you're the chair.
So I would like you to actually tell me why you'd like to do this, other than for financial reasons. What's the hardship here?
I'm not, I'm not making a hardship argument.
Well, you gotta.
Right.
It's substantially more detrimental, was the argument that, for which the board voted it down from my review of the decision, on the front page, because of the determination that it was not substantially more detrimental.
But I can read you some of the reasons.
I read them all.
Oh, you did read them all.
I read them all.
All right, so we don't have...
So it's, I just, I just, I just felt that under section 5.111, for definition of a two-family, saying a detached dwelling designed for and occupied by two families, that it was not designed. It was never built as a two-family. It has separate utilities. There's a separate staircase. There was never a transformation. It's just the fact that they didn't use the third floor.
I got, Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, there were three families on that street in the old standard, you know, three units separately. The majority of those two-and-a-half-story houses on that street, other than 26, which is larger than your clients', every one of them is either a one or a two. Historically, you don't see two-and-a-half-story houses being built to house three families. They make good single-family homes, and they make okay, if there's parking, they can make okay two-family homes. The slots is less than 5,000 square feet. You want to put three families on a postage stamp without a sufficient parking. This is out of character. This is out of character with what, what, what similar two and a half story homes on that street are being used as...
The, the only reason I bring this up again is if the house was built in 1911, in which there were little or no standards, because zoning didn't come into effect until '25, that, 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 that there are certain rights, right, because through the grandfatherings of, of what buildings looked like. And it's, you know, he's, he's, sure, there, there is, there's a, there's a financial hardship, and sure, he should have been, he should have gotten out and sought a legal opinion from, but that didn't happen. So what we're trying to do, and what I'm asking the board to do, is say, "I don't want to change, I don't want to go in there and reconfigure this building, like, by pushing it out, by changing the footprint, by doing anything. All I want to do is improve the building so the third level can be improved and somebody can live there." Because currently, currently, in order to use it as a two-family and, and use the third floor, it would take tens of thousands to retrofit the second and third floor to be one unit, because it's not. It's, it's, it's separate. It has separate kitchens, separate bedrooms. And the pictures, I believe, that were shown earlier reflect how old some of the utilities are in that building. So it's, it's historically been maybe an anomaly, but these anomalies existed until such time as, as a change in the zoning district would require it. But it's an apartment zoning district, so it's not an illegal use. It's just a position that, due to a misunderstanding, created this, this situation that we find ourselves in. I would ask the board to allow itself to sort of think in, in a way that's, that's not as constrictive as the, and, and you're right, I'm not disagreeing with anything that any of the members have said, but I'm asking for this relief because of the situation that has occurred to Mr. Mesa, who, who by the way, you know, this is his first home that he purchased, he owns this. At some point, he was hoping to move into it on the third floor. It's, it's, you're right, there, there, the schools, my wife's a teacher at the Harrington School, I understand how, how busy the schools are. But, but that being said, the taxes that'll be, be coming in, health offsets some of those, if in fact there's a, an issue.
How many bedrooms on the third floor? How many bedrooms on the third floor?
One.
There, there is, there's two.
And others, too.
There, it was, it's...
Yeah, I think last time you were here, I think, there's something, you actually removed closets when you were moving?
Oh, yes.
Right? I'm also, yes, I believe you still, still closeted when you called an office.
Yeah, that's how we put it on.
We will, if you want us to retrofit the third floor, they have only one bedroom, if that's a condition, that, that's something that we would and would gladly accept. I just don't want the third floor to remain empty. And I can't, we can't afford to convert the second, third into a single unit. And, and there's a separate heating system for the third and the second. It's, it's, it's been like all of the things, it sort of has grown over time, and we're trying to legitimize what's there.
Wait, is there separate heating for the third floor as well?
For the third, the second. One, it says, I think, in one of the things, one was oil and one was gas. I can't remember which was which. But it was, when it was done, it was done separately, and it was done because they were separate units. People were paying, one was paying gas, they put gas in, the other had oil.
And there's, there's two things of degress on the third floor?
Yes, yeah.
And so you'd be making the building safer with the sprinkler system?
Yeah, exactly.
They have been already installed.
We, we put it in already. And smoke detectors.
And a fire alarm system.
And the taxes we don't pursue.
Yes.
There's some congestion there, and you can't rectify the parking.
Well, you know, you could make the argument, and here again, I, you know, I don't want to belabor anything. If in fact it was a three, the parking, whatever that parking was, would be grandfathered as well. So, there are many towns that take the position that the structure was grandfathered, the parking was grandfathered. We have parking, we can, we can take it down and make the spaces larger and, and have, ask for a parking relief on the parking. We will, we designed this in a way that the architect told us, when he went down, was the way that, that best met the parking requirements.
What is the legal about these spaces?
No, if...
No, if, why?
You can't park up against the building like that. You need to have the cliff.
We, we put in five, we were told that was the, originally, one was going to be on the other side, and we were told that they wanted it on the side closest to the building.
Any other questions of the board? Is there any other questions of the board? Seeing that there are none, thank you very much, gentlemen. Do you want to speak, or do you want me to read the letter?
Yeah, I just, I walked the area, I saw the building that they, they did the work on, I toured the whole facility with the sprinkler systems and upgrade. My whole thing was the parking. If they could satisfy the parking for the neighborhood, that's when I would go with them on that there. If, if the parking's sufficient, then I would give them my blessing to go with them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition? I believe Counselor Hogan was the only letter I had, right, on this?
Yep. I would say this, one last thing. I, I believe that Counselor Seer had spoken to Counselor Hogan, because that was, I understood that he was unable to be here, but it was also, had he been here, would have, would have expressed that, that he was in favor of the petition. Am I speaking out of turn, Mr. Hogan?
I can't speak for Counselor Seer.
Okay.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to close the hearing for those in favor. Is there anybody here in opposition to this petition? Is there anybody here in opposition to this petition? Seeing that there are none, I'll close the hearing for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
You know, Mr. Chairman, when I look at the letter of the decision, I really don't see what's changed since the last time we saw it back in May.
I agree.
There really is inadequate parking. It, you know, some of the, some of this is technical, but, you know, there is no evidence of hardship other than financial. Petition to field a meter's burden, that the statutory prerequisites have been met, and that the variance is justified. And I could go on and on, there's other ones. I just, I personally, you know, I was against this, I, like, again, I, I looked long-term. You got nine other buildings, two and a half stories, that if they are coming in, well, how do we say, why do we say no to them? If we said yes to you? You know, we're setting a, a precedent here, and we could be adding substantial number of units on, on an already busy street. And I, I just, I, I can understand to some degree if it was used as a three, but you know how many, you know how many homes there are right now in this city that have illegal units in them?
I'd like to believe this...
Tremendous amount, a tremendous number. But I just, I just don't see, I, I haven't been compelled to see any changes than what the reasons that we gave, we justified back in May. So I'm going to make a motion that, that again, that the petition be denied.
I will, I will actually second that, and, and the reason for the chair taking second position on that is, is the same thing. Historically, we do not look in favor of converting twos into threes for no substantial reason, especially with less than the required parking. Parking's a big thing. And, and for that reason, I, I agree with Mr. Cole, and I, I did not feel compelled that you guys had a, a good reason that you want to make this a three family, you know, other than the, other thing we've already heard time and time again on this case. So with that, I'll, I'll second. Call the roll?
Mr. Beckwood?
Well, I'm making one to actually, I think, five parties, four, two bedrooms in each apartment.
There's a motion on the floor?
Right, you have to...
Is that only a motion?
You would have to just vote, or you could vote no on this motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Wait, why, why, is it not the original board of the, the original boardroom's on this case?
No, I think over this case.
It was carried over.
So this is not a new case, then? This, I thought, I was just giving that to them, Dave.
It's a remand.
Okay. I, the only, I'm sorry, guys, the reason why I gave you that was because I figured you guys could ask questions, because you were on the original case. I wasn't, I wasn't sure who was sitting to vote, so I was under the impression it was a new case.
That's the only reason why.
So it's remanded, so it's the orig, so the original sitters would, would cast the vote? Okay, that's, that's my mistake, I apologize. I believe all those people are here anyway, right? It's you guys? So all the people are here, so just call the roll of the original people, then.
Okay. Mr. Beckwood?
Yes, sir, right.
Go ahead. Mr. Wilton?
No.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Yes, to deny. Mr. Curly?
Yes, to deny.
And Mr. Jusson?
Yes. Petition denied. So the next case this evening?
Thank you for your time, Ken.
You're welcome.
Please.
Thank you. If you want to stick it to me. The next case this evening is 308 Chestnut Street, petition of Evrada Montero, is that correct? Sorry.
Good evening.
To allow the construction of parking stalls with less than the required property line setback on an existing non-conforming lot with less than the required area and frontage containing an existing non-conforming single-family home in the R2 district, finding that such use is not substantially more detrimental in its effect on the neighborhood. Go ahead, ladies.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing us to, to talk about our case. This is my mom, and these are my two sisters. We are here tonight to ask that you please consider us as to have a driveway, because the winter is coming, and as you know, it's very difficult to even park, even when you have a spot nearby. And we have no driveway, we have no place to park right now. There are cars that park in front of our house, and if I get to park in front, I have to always be careful when I come out and when I come in, because a car is coming out of speed, it might even hit me when I come in and coming out, since it's a car, where is the car, where the, the house is located. This is a single house. My car has gotten struck already in the past because I have no parking. But, you know, especially with the winter time coming and having the parking, taking even the groceries is very difficult, and my mom is in her seventies, you know, and it's really, really difficult for us, you know, all the time. You know, we have to sometimes park two blocks away, and we, during the winter time, we have to park at the high school. My car has gotten struck at the high school because when we have those consecutive days of snowing, I took somebody's parking, but not on purpose. I have actually shovelled one day on one, and then the next day, I come, came from work, and because of the snow and everything, I come, like, at 7:30, I park in somebody else's spot, and my car got dented the next day. So, you know, we really need parking, and the reason we're asking for three parts is because my sisters also drive.
So let me tell you, I certainly sympathize with you. I can't figure out though, based on your drawing, what, what exactly you're trying to do there.
Sure, sure. So we have a lot of land, and we would like to have a three, on the side chart, we would like to have a driveway, so that it will go up the hill. Yes, yes. So we will be able to go up and go, it'll be like an L.
So you want to go up in here?
Yes.
You want, so you want to have it kind of, you want to kind of have parking up on the hill here?
Yes, or actually be more where, where now the fence, the white fence is shut.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, so you're going to come up in from the front?
Yes, yes, to the front.
Are you going to take, are you going to take all that out? You want to move the wall?
We will have a, a wall, but at the same time, it won't be completely flat, it will go up the hill, and we have to do a space for the back.
That truck that's there, that's, that's not on your property?
No, that's the neighbor's. We don't have no parking, that's the reason why, so that's for...
So this is the neighbor's, yes, they want... So you kind of want to do what the neighbor has, only you're anticipating hitting ledge, so you're probably just going to go up on an incline with it?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
You're going to have to build a retaining wall on that, or?
It was so, because we talked to that contractor, he will do, he won't have to make some very high wall, this is going to go up the hill, but yes, he's going to make sure that it's within the legal...
Have you spoke to the town, are you going to get a curb cut, or are you just going to...
So, we would probably have to do the uphill first?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if they were going to, going to give you many griefs, no.
Yeah, we, we spoke with them.
Oh, you did, okay, I, okay, yep.
You won't prove that it won't give a...
Right, no, okay. So you've already spoke with them, now, and you're just waiting to hear from them?
Yes, yes, they know that we're very concerned, it's really difficult, especially in the snow coming in.
Oh, yeah. So how, so you're going to go in all the way, so you're going to be able to get a few cars in there, right?
Yes, yes, we have plenty of land in the back.
Oh, yeah? Okay. How much, how much room on each side? Are you going to kind of like go right up the middle with it, so you've got some room on each side?
Oh, yeah, plenty, we have plenty, plenty of space in the back.
How many parking spaces?
Three, because each one's a surprise, I drive, and it's, sometimes we have to leave each other at the garage, and then another one has to park, so especially during winter time, but it's really difficult, because you just find a place, even at the high school when it snows, really difficult. If you take somebody's parking, you don't know what's going to happen, and I have had that happen, and where my car got struck, so I just...
Take this out?
No, they're going to go up to the front.
Yeah, they are, so that's a little bit, it's a bit...
It is, yes, the white fence is covered, yes, that's true, that's correct, so it'll be the white fence...
So just like where the minivan is, it'll be the same thing on the grass, only going up the hill instead of digging into the hill, is what they're saying?
And it'll retain the wall.
Yeah.
How long have you lived there?
Since 2001. And it's, it's just a...
You've known through this all these years?
Yeah, it's a... I sometimes have to park in blocks away, three blocks away. Tonight, my sister parked like a block away, I was able to find parking, there was somebody else already parked in front, and I said, I'm kind of, it's a car, I'm kind of, you know, worried, worried that somebody's going to strike me.
You must love the house to go through all that stress, I'll tell you that one. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in favor of this petition?
Thank you.
We are, we are.
Okay, just if you want to just give your name, if you want to say something, you're welcome to, just give, tell Mary your name.
I'm Carol Salas. I'm my mom, I'm her daughter. We definitely need this parking spot, because we've been going through so many issues with finding of parking spot, we don't want our car to get hit, and it would, it would be one less car and land on the street.
Sounds like three less cars and land on the street.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly, exactly.
Now, we need to grow up, this, you know, before it was a little empty car, but now it's...
Cities growing.
Yeah.
What is your name?
I'm Marjorie Salas.
Did you get that? Marjorie? Marjorie, right?
Yes, yes. This would mean so much to us in so many different ways. I mean, aside from us driving, I mean, even just when relatives come by on for holidays or anything else, I mean, it's so difficult to just, and the city, I mean, it's grown so much, so many people are here. So being able to even find parking right in front of our home, that's, that's rare or anything else, I mean, it's so difficult to just, and the city, I mean, it's grown so much, so many people are here, so being able to even find parking right in front of our home, that's, that's rare these days.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else in favor of this petition? Anybody else in favor? Saying that they're a none, I'm gonna close it for those in favor. Anybody here in opposition? Anybody here in opposition of this petition? Saying that they're a none, I'm gonna close the hearing for those in opposition. What is the wish of the board?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, please follow the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Ms. Grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Ms. Grant. Good luck, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you so much, too. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Get ready for the snow. The next case this evening is Seventeen Reservoir Road. Petitioner? Waterview Properties, Daniel P. Gates, managed by his attorney, Sam Vitale, to allow conversion of a pre-existing garage with less than the required left sideline to a single-family dwelling on a lot in an R2 general residence district containing seventy-five forty-three square feet with less than required frontage, Reservoir Road and Style Street with a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling therein.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, I'm Attorney Vitale. With me is Dan Gates, the manager of, the owner of Waterview LLC. Mr. Gates is a builder by trade. He purchased the property a couple of years ago, he's been making improvements, he wants to continue that path. It's a desirable Westland neighborhood, which is a mix of older homes and newer homes. Many of the newer homes were constructed with the approval of city agencies, including the Board of Appeals. What he proposes is to convert an existing garage, and I think by providing members with an arrangement that goes from the street side of Styles, what the proposed garage would look like. This area of Westland, I think, is known to members of the board, I was here recently on one on Style Street. This is the, the New Hall Heights back in the nineteen-ten and the nineteen-twenty's, the New Hall's owned a lot of land in Westland, and they had subdivisions. Excuse me?
You remember a lot.
I don't remember this New Hall. This one, this one, it was Howard. The one I remember was Harrison, I think, the last time I was here. So this was Howard, he was before my time. But Howard's plan was the basis for many of the lots being constructed, and then subsequent to that, individuals have come in, and some in the recent history, and divided those lots. This lot was originally two lots on this plan, one nineteen and one twenty. And apparently, one twenty got divided, and a portion of it was added to the current lot to make it seven thousand plus square feet. A two-family dwelling has been there since the nineteen-twenty's, as has the garage. There've been really three additions of the garage. In nineteen twenty-five, when automobiles weren't as frequent as they are now, an automotive wheelhouse was built for two cars. It was a metal structure, it, and it stayed there until nineteen fifty-five. In nineteen fifty-five, an individual came along and was granted permission to build a regular garage, two-car garage, and it stayed that way until about two thousand and three, when the garage was improved by the then-owner, and an addition was constructed. And the garage was well-constructed, there was footings, and in between this time, in nineteen seventy-seven, the then-owner came before the board with the older garage, and received approval from the board at that time to convert that then-garage to a single-family structure. And for whatever reason, the then-owner did not proceed, but the board approved the construction of a single-family home with the then-existing garage. The proposal we have before you is shown in the plans that were submitted, the drawing by Mr. Reed, and the housing plans that we've submitted with respect to how the garage would be converted to a dwelling unit. A space in the garage would be maintained for parking. There would be two parallel parkings alongside the garage. And it was noted in nineteen seventy-seven, what was very unusual is why a home built at Seventeen Reservoir Road would have a garage that fronted on Styles, because human nature being what it is, I don't know that many people would drive around the corner, park, get out of the car, have to walk back around to come to Seventeen Reservoir Road. And I think it has something to do when they divided that lot that's on the corner, that's number nineteen, and they added this piece. And I'm not privy to what that plan was, but clearly there was a plan. And so, one of the reasons we think that this proposal is worthy of consideration is that you can access the garage from Style Street, and you can access Seventeen Reservoir Road from Reservoir Road. There's parking at the rear of Seventeen Reservoir Road for the two-family dwelling, they'd be parking inside the garage and beside the garage converted to a single-family dwelling on Styles. If the board were favorably inclined, even though condominium is not a zoning concept, it's an ownership concept, and what Mr. Gates would propose is, if he gets approval to have the garage used as a single-family dwelling along the sideline between that and the neighboring property, there's a fence and a wall, he would approve that, he would provide landscaping, I think, and the most recent Reed plan showed, and plantings. And what we would do was not unlike, I think I've done before, which is, if we make this a condominium, then each unit owner contributes to the maintenance of the lot, each unit owner is assessed each month to maintain the property. The city benefits because now, instead of a single property owner, there'd be three property owners, they all would contribute towards the maintenance of what would then be the common area, which means that they all have access. Parking spaces would be assigned so that the people who had the single-family home portion would get the parking, obviously inside the garage space and beside the garage space. The individuals who acquired the properties that are now the first and second floor at Seventeen Reservoir Road would be assigned the parking spaces that are at the rear. And so, in terms of the, the character of that neighborhood, as I said, it's a blend of older homes, newer homes. I think this, if you look at the, the rendering that we submitted, I think that you find that the rendering reflects much like the existing home that abuts, very similar in size as a single-family, also in terms of the ability to access it, one can access it directly from Styles. And I think it also serves the purpose that, there is no other reason that I can, I really understand why there's an L-shaped lot. As you know, an L-shaped lot isn't a regular lot, the L-shaped lot is not the lot that was originally on that nineteen-ten New Hall plan, and for whatever reasons that I can't divine, I can only have conjecture, it looks like a portion of one lot was taken and added to the other to create the L-shaped lot, which recognized the garage on Styles and the dwelling on Reservoir. But I think in this day and age, with people's access to vehicles, it's highly unlikely that somebody would have had use for a garage that faced on Styles. In the past, the garage has had other uses. In nineteen seventy-seven, when the board approved it, the garage was apparently in disrepair, the then-owner came before the board, the board approved the conversion of that garage to a single-family dwelling. And thereafter, as I said, improvements were made to the garage, the garage was used by a prior owner in relation to his home occupation. The property got acquired by Mr. Gates two years ago, he's made improvements, he desires to continue those improvements. I think in terms of the character of the neighborhood, a dwelling that would be like the one proposed, would add value to the neighborhood, would provide additional revenue to the city, it would be consistent with what I think the character of the single-family nature of that neighborhood is, and it would afford individuals an opportunity who might not otherwise be able to afford or purchase a single-family home, to get started either in the first or the second floor as a condo owner, acquiring a garage. It would give three people an opportunity to become homeowners, it would create a fund to maintain the property unlike any other in the neighborhood, where each unit owner in a condominium monthly pays a fee towards the maintenance of the property, towards keeping it in repair, and keeping it insured and well-maintained. And so I think those benefits support the proposal. As I say, the board in nineteen seventy-seven would not this substantial garage, with a much less substantial garage, approved it as a dwelling unit, and the only changes that have really been made to the garage were improvements that were made, and made it a very sound structure, made it one that I defer to Mr. Gates's knowledge as a builder, but he certainly did some due diligence with respect to whether there were sufficient footings, whether it could carry the structure, and based on that, he feels that it would be readily be able to be adapted as a dwelling unit and add to the...
So, so Sam, let me, let me jump in here for a second. Guys, you guys have questions for the petitioner, or?
Yeah.
Let me understand, so you, you own the two-family, you want to build a one-family, and you want to make it a condo property, right? And where's the parking gonna happen?
On the parking plan, we, we submitted a plan, Mr. Reed's got a plan with, I've got a larger plan that you can show you, there are six spaces, one in the garage, two beside what would be the garage, and three at the rear, that's six, required parking would be five.
Are you entering from Reservoir and Styles?
No, you would enter from Reservoir, you can right now enter from Reservoir and Styles, but the people at Reservoir would obviously drive up the driveway and park at the rear of Seventeen. The people on Styles can enter the garage, which is off Styles, and park beside the garage. So Mr., here's a larger plan that...
So what I'm saying, so you can enter, you're gonna be able to enter the one-family from Styles and the two-family from Reservoir, is the, is the plan? So there'll be no connection between the two?
No, it is at this moment, but it wouldn't be...
Right, so that, your plan is to delineate the...
And, and one of the things with a condominium is that you either have assigned parking or deed-in parking, and so, and parking has value. So obviously, the, the garage with the space inside, only person that's gonna park in that spot is going to be the owner of that...
Single.
...single-family home. And then, and why that one would have a proportionate larger share of the expense is because they would then have two outdoor spaces. So that, that dwelling unit really has three spaces on Styles. The two-family is required to have one point five per dwelling unit, it would have the three at the rear. And they, those would also be to be pertinent, being part of what is deed-in with the unit, are assigned to those individuals, not unlike the most condominiums that assign parking so that people don't park in other people's spots.
Just, just for, for just pure curiosity's sake, why not split the lots and, and just build a single-family house?
Because, because I think that, first of all, that would be counter to the ability to have three individual unit owners, because a condominium has to have common area. And the second is that, take a look at number nineteen, how number nineteen became on three thousand square feet, somebody divided that New Hall plan lot.
Right.
I think the lots typically, if you look at the street list on Reservoir Road, you look at the street list on Styles, the lots are all six, five, seven, but this board allowed, I think, the home at thirty-two to be constructed on a lot that got divided, I think the one across thirty-seven. There have been other lots which people have taken that old plan and come in as the owners, and made a presentation to you, and the board has approved, I would say in the last ten or fifteen years, at least two or three of the existing newer homes. The older homes sit essentially on the lots that they were there in the nineteen, early nineteen-twenty's. I don't know how number nineteen got divided, but it did. And it, so, to answer your question, I don't think that putting number nineteen as a two-family dwelling on like three thousand square feet.
Do you, do you live on this property?
No.
Purely income property?
Yes.
Are you just the manager, or do you own?
I own the property.
You own the property?
So, so we're turning the garage into a one-family, into a one, one, a single-family home, right? And that's the picture I'm...
Yep.
So we're increasing that substantially, that's gonna have setbacks there?
It's the same footprint that's there.
It's the exact same footprint as the garage.
Same, same structure below, it's just going up.
Okay, and, and then over on Reservoir, are there any changes to that structure? You just gonna call it, you call it the three units of condo association, is that it?
Condominium is a form of ownership. There are many two- and three-family, Mrs. Curley knows, there are many two- and three-family dwellings that have more than one owner, and each floor is a separate unit, and each of the owners in a condominium, as I indicated, contribute to the maintenance of the property. I've done other developments, I think, on Belmont a long time ago.
So is this gonna be one association, though, three units?
You have, when you form a condominium, each unit owner has a percentage of the total expense.
These three units have an association?
Correct, a homeowner's association.
Yeah, so it's gonna be one association.
And in my experience, ones that are this small, they, they really don't do well, because it's hard to charge that much money, so, and that's where I'm having trouble wrapping my head around this thing, to be honest, because what's gonna happen is the property's not gonna get taken care of, well, because there's not gonna be a lot of money there for that.
Well, to that, that's a very good point, but after the crash in two thousand and eight, maybe Mr. Wood is familiar, the federal government changed the requirements with respect to condominiums, that you must maintain a sufficient reserve, what's called working capital, to maintain and repair the roof, expenses that relate to so-called capital expenditures. Then there are operating expenditures, landscaping, snow plowing. You will not be able to satisfy any lender because of the regulations that were adopted by Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, all of the insurers of mortgages. And this is a true story. My daughter bought a condominium, she bought it from a well-known developer in Lynn, who bought it at foreclosure, and there was only one problem, there were twenty units. The bank wouldn't lend her the money, because the condominium association, in its reserve, was six thousand dollars short, said the bank. So the seller stepped up, paid the six, nineteen people weren't gonna welcome my daughter by contributing towards that six thousand dollar deficit. Since then, the ship has been righted. I, I've just done two condominiums, I did a closing today, and I, I tell people the same thing I'm saying to you, that the requirement to maintain the reserves isn't just a nice idea, it's a required idea by the federal government, so that they don't get into a problem where banks have to take over properties that haven't been maintained, or they have to take over properties where there aren't sufficient reserves. And so, one of the advances that have been made by both the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and by the federal government is to highly regulate condominiums. And in fact, many people starting out, many people would desire to come to the city of Lynn, but they can't afford to buy a two-family, they can't afford starting out. And so, one of the appeals of condominiums is that people who qualify, who might not otherwise be able to buy a single-family home, or understanding that they're sharing the maintenance, not with themselves alone, or with their partners, but with other people who have the same interest and who are required to provide funds. So unlike a single-family home, a single-family condominium owner has to pay a monthly maintenance fee that goes towards what's called working capital, repair and replacement, and operating expenses, mow the lawn, keep plow the snow, and so, and that's highly regulated. That's highly regulated. But it makes it more affordable for persons starting out, it provides, the city, instead of getting one tax bill, the city's gonna get, the neighborhood has three tax bills, and if you, if you look at many of the neighborhoods in Lynn, that has been done, and I would suggest, I just looked at one recently, that there's a question about, on Flint Street, about how you drive onto it, it was done in like nineteen eighty-six. It's a three-family home, one, two, three, I think it's at thirty-eight Flint Street. But, the question with the DPW and the Building Department, who have a different point of views, is how do you access it from the street? How do you get there, onto the property? And, but that's been that way since, I think, nineteen eighty-six. So, people who are starting out, much like my daughter did, were able to acquire and become a first-time homeowner by buying a condominium unit rather than renting, and, and then have to continue every month to make an investment in the maintenance of the property, and making sure that the property is well-maintained. And the incentive is this, if you don't do that, you won't be able to sell the unit or refinance the unit, because no bank will make a loan. So that's how the federal government stepped up.
And then it turns into an apartment.
Excuse me?
And then it will become an apartment.
Well, any condominium can be reverted, but a condominium, most banks won't finance condominiums unless they are sold to disparate parties, not related parties.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chen, I have a lot of questions, but I'll wait, I'm opposed to this petition, so I'll wait through the opposition, and I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, guys. Anybody else here who should speak in favor of this petition?
Thank you.
In favor?
I'm opposed. I'm opposed to it.
Anybody here in favor of this petition?
I oppose.
Saying that they're a none, I'm gonna close the hearing for those in favor. Is there anybody here in opposition to this petition? One at a time, step up and give your name and tell us what's going on.
Hello, my name's Tyler Palmer, I'm resident owner of thirty-two Style Street. I just have a concern about the congestion in the neighborhood of adding another single-family home, and I'm hearing now that it's gonna... home, um, and in hearing now that it's gonna become a condominium, concerns about what the homeowner association cost will be just to maintain two separate properties, 'cause instead of just having a single building, you're gonna have two roofs, two heating units, two water and sewer issues to, to fund for, as two separate buildings in a condominium. Especially with only three units, it's kinda spread thinly when you have two separate individual structures. So, concerns around that and, um, just the, like I said, the congestion in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
My name's Vanessa Dennis, um, we live in the house directly next to this, um, proposition.
Which?
So thirty-six Style Street, so it's right, it's on Styles, yeah. Um, so right next to the garage that's there now. So our main concern is just how really close this house is gonna be to our house. I mean, right now, it's okay, it's just a garage, you can live there, but, um, having a house right next to us, it's, there's already not a lot of space there. So, just being so close to another property, you know, concerns us, and then like Tyler said, just the congestion on the street, I mean, the parking is already limited, especially in the weekends and especially during the winter, I mean, as it is, we park in our front, front yard during the wintertime when it snows. So having, you know, more cars there, it's just gonna make the situation worse. And, I think that's pretty much it, I mean, we just are really concerned about-
Well, you, you understand that the claim of, you know, parking-
Yeah, but you don't know how many cars the person's gonna have.
Three, you only have three.
But what if they have visitors?
Yes.
Or a company or anything like that, I mean, it's, yeah, and, I mean, the street parking is already so limited.
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question, you guys, there's no sidewalks up in that neighborhood anyway, right? It's, it's street right to the grass, correct?
So, there, uh, according to the measurements, it's incorporated into the street.
It is.
Which, which is turning this kind of block on?
No, that's what I thought, I just, yep, I thought so, sorry, go ahead.
But that's okay, so, um, yeah, and just the, really, just the congestion on the street is the main, our main concern, just adding another home, I just don't see how it would be a good thing.
Yep, thank you.
Are we with thirty-six Style?
Thirty-six, yeah, right next door.
So are you concerned with drainage, you have a problem?
Yeah, we already have a problem with the drainage coming into our yard, so if there, anything is going on, like if they do anything with the wall or the fence or anything like that, you know, if they have to knock it down, I don't know what they're gonna do with it, but if it makes it worse, then that's, you know, a problem for us.
Thank you.
My name's Janet Gallo, thirty-seven Style Street, across the street from the property on Augusta because of the parking issues and everything that she just said, um, the wall being taken down for the property being built is gonna be a concern because mice do live in there, and they're gonna relocate, and that's gonna be a problem for us, and I've been there thirty-plus years.
Perfect.
I prepared a beautiful twenty-one Style Street, so the area's gonna be more cautious. We're still getting about three, three, uh, three condo family, I mean, three condos. I don't want that, my number to change to South Boston, it would be to, between a single-family to condo. So, yeah, I mean, if you're gonna give them, you know, the right to do a single-family in a small area which is not, and doesn't have a requirement for a single-family, they will give the option for other people to do the same thing in, you know, in future because of hot market, so anybody's that's smaller in the area is gonna change it to single-family.
Thank you. Anybody else in opposition to this petition? Anybody else in opposition? And if there are none?
Yes, I want to make some statements on this.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um, what can I, the, uh, plan, the, I can, oh, first of all, this, this building is an accessory structure that was built for the purpose of covered parking in the seventeen Reservoir, and where they can park cars inside, and rent in the smaller house, and, uh, it's a good setup for that. By taking this away from there, leaves them for parking in a bag, but if you visit in the site, and I don't think you find the rear stairs, you can hardly get by there. Yeah, those closed mirrors, I don't think you'd miss. So that's questionable about that. The thing is true is the rear means a address, and the two-family down to Style Street would be, would be start, and vice versa, and if, if this garage was allowed to be a single-family home. And, um, it's, it's, uh, overpowered, you say the least, to, to have more, another one, uh, another single-family home there. Has no peace, but has no, it's a spat-hung way. To me, it's, it's, it's a bad thing for the city, but this is a lot of the hammer that's gonna devalue the two, uh, the two-family in the front, because their debt, uh, excessive go, if those with that, with that home would be lost. But I feel that, uh, this would be dramatic.
So are you, are you a motion to deny?
Yes, I mean, a motion to deny.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded, call the roll.
Mr. Wood?
Uh, yes, to deny.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Curly?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, petition is denied. The next case this evening, it's gonna be five fifty-one Eastern Ave, to allow the use of an accessory structure, two car garage, non-conforming lot in a single-family district as a nail salon, non-conforming with section, um, nine point oh, the zoning ordinance. So, I've done some homework over the past couple of weeks, a couple of things we do know, um- There is a few things that you will have to have in order to be even, be able to get a permit to do anything, um, state license, obviously, right? You got that?
Two years, yeah.
Um, obviously the school you attended, that's easy, um, the sanitary codes, they're gonna require you to keep up with those, um, infestation control, um, you're gonna need a running sink with hot water, is that an issue?
Is that, well, see, the only thing, um, I feel like we weren't, I feel like personally I was very unprepared, um, for the meeting last time, I didn't really know what to expect and what I needed to say. I just wanted to make a few things a little bit more clear, is my intentions of the space. Um, I, I, I feel like I'm, we're hung up on the word salon, and I know that sounds funny, I, my intentions are more of a nail studio, if that makes any sense. Um, like I said, I specialize in acrylics, meaning I don't do manicures or pedicures, which are the procedures that require running water. Um, acrylic nails to do don't actually require running water, it's actually worse, if there's water before, during, or after the process, it can make it less effective. Um, actually, in school, we learned, if you just sanitize your hands, sanitize your work area, and then sanitize the client's hands, it doesn't affect it. Um, it doesn't actually require water for acrylic nails, of course, and that's what I specialize in, like the design, and I technically want to be able to shift into filming what I do, the nail art, and making like, uh, I don't know how familiar you are with social media, but like Instagram and, yeah, like YouTube and things like that, and I'm hoping to kind of shift my brand, if you will, into being like nail art videos and nail art tutorials. I think with the garage, what we're really looking to do is sort of have a nice, clean, pretty space, um, to film in, and also for me to just be able to do nails somewhere that I'm not choking them in the house, you know, and if I have downtime, I'd like to change my own, and just have a, a space to do that.
Here's, here's what I'm willing to do, I can't speak for the other five people sitting here. I was told that we could grant you a temporary one.
Yes, I'm not saying that.
But one thing you'll have to do when that time is up, if you, if you do plan to move forward with this as a business, you will have to reapply and come back before us. I can't just wave you on to continue on, you'd have to come back before and revisit, am I saying that right, Mary, did I get that right? So, we could grant you a short amount of time at this, you're still gonna, I'm not the governing body, you're still gonna have to go down, pull the proper license, do all of that stuff, I can't get you around that, what their requirements are, this is what they, I, I don't even wanna be even a part of that.
That would be a stretch.
Right, right, so, so, I mean, I, I would potentially, I would probably say, I would be in favor of giving you like six months, um, and then, from there, let's see where it is in six months, I, I believe that that wasn't on my purview, right, six months, right? Anybody here have an issue with that, who's sitting on this?
What else? I'm just wondering if you, if you may maybe withdraw the whole petition, since you tell much you wanna make it to a studio, so you can do a vlog and why not, so-
I mean, you can absolutely, I would be willing to let you withdraw without prejudice and go do whatever, I, don't tell me, I don't know.
Just go out there and do your studio.
You know, if you don't wanna reveal-
I understand that I could build a structure in there and make it all pretty neat.
No alterations being done to the garage, so just go out there and start filming your YouTube page, and it belongs to you guys.
Or you can, or you can take the six months and-
Go ahead.
And you can take the six months and then see where you are in six months.
What are you gonna do with the heat? Sorry?
It won't be-
Heat, heat, um, I could probably get the little space heater-
Space heater that we had before.
-that Walmart or Sears or something like that. See, this doesn't sound healthy to me. This does not sound healthy. I went up to the border health, and the border health told me that you have to have a sink, that you have to, you, there's a lot of things, you have, you have to have running water, hot water. Are you gonna do gel nails?
No, I do just acrylic, false nail application, acrylic nail design.
Total different application.
It's colored acrylic, it's very different, um, from what I assume most of you are familiar with, of salons, it's come a long way with like glitters and colored acrylics and new design and stuff. I personally, I mean, I've been working, doing nails for two years now, and I think I've done maybe fifteen manicures, and-
Yeah, what I was suggesting-
Where are you gonna get your customers from?
Um, online, social media networking and things like that. It's actually very difficult.
And that's why I was saying, we'd rather start in the garage than have her move into a building and not being able to pay the rent and not having the customers right away, letting it build over some time, and if it turns into that, fine, if not, I don't mind if she stays in the garage and does the business for a while.
So I'm just saying, if you go through this, then you will have to accommodate all these other, uh, departments, you know, I S D will have to be involved, Health Department will have to be involved, um, you know, you have to maintain this for six months, um, and support so, withdraw without prejudice and just will start filming and do your acrylic stuff.
Um, my problem is opening Pandora's box. I'm not gonna say yes to you, and then every other, other person on Eastern Ave is gonna come in and wanna sell antiques out of their garage or lists out of the garage.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna do that. I don't wanna burst your love on, I, I, I think it's wonderful you wanna go out on your own, you wanna do that, but I just can't vote for something in a garage and have the rest of the world come for this board for the same thing you're asking. That's just how I feel.
Would it be different if we wanted to operate out of the house instead of the garage?
As a-
Well, that's a whole different story.
As a business.
Well-
Like I said, I don't wanna smell the nails, and she wanted, doing it in her bedroom, and I said, why don't we use the garage, I'll build you a spot, I'll make a box, I'll close it off.
Yeah, well, they're acrylic liquid, you use it probably about a milliliter or two, uh, in a little jar that has a lid, and it's out, probably about thirty minutes.
So, here's what we're gonna do, is there any other questions of the board?
No, I have no questions.
You have questions?
Okay, no questions of the board? I'll give you a motion for six months temporary, but you have to, with the stipulation, you have to go to, um, you have to have all the I S D and all the state approvals, um, so it, it, it actually pretty much is on them, so as far as I'm concerned, whatever you're gonna do in your garage, you can do, and you can do it for six months, and if it goes anywhere, you've gotta come back, if it doesn't-
Right, well, not to be facetious, I know I don't need this board.
You know what I mean, lock the car in there, so-
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, also, she should look for a more permanent-
Right, right.
Turn that six months.
But for six months-
Instead of thinking, you know, stay there.
Right.
Read the board might change.
Use us, stuff.
And remember, if, if this is voted, yes, we are not the final stop. I cannot stress that enough, 'cause if it comes back, it's, it's recorded, it's, it's, you know what I mean, we, all I'm giving you permission to do is go see them, I don't mind for six months what you're doing in the garage, so- Motion made and seconded, with those stipulations.
So is I S D on checkup on it?
I'm sorry, what'd you say? I'm sorry, what'd you say? What's that? Oh, yeah, okay.
Is I S D on checkup on it after six months, or what, what issue?
I was just gonna say, how do we go about that, and what, do we do after six months?
Huh? Yeah, there'll be a letter which will go to I S D and I S D will follow up.
I don't know what I S D is, so-
After six months.
Inspectorial service.
So, I'm sorry, the Building Department, yes.
Okay, Building Department, like I said, I had already been in touch with them at one point, that's how we actually became here, because they said you can't start a business without having an approval because of the area where they're in. But I, I wanna state that I don't mind if Sabrina does this for a year or two in the garage.
Well, I'm only gonna, I'm only, we'll only go six months.
No, 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 I'm saying, if, after six months, then what do we have to do?
You're gonna have to go, yeah, or if it's gonna go somewhere, you'd have to come petition for a permanent.
Okay, that, that's what my question is, what do we need to do?
And if you don't, if it doesn't go anywhere, you're parking the car back in the garage, forget life ever happened, you know what I mean?
Right, no, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what I need to do, sir.
So in six months, that's what I'm saying, you'd have to come back through the whole process again and reapply, come back to another meeting and state your case, here's where we've been over the past six months, here's where we're going, this is what we wanna do.
So do I need the building inspector to come down and look at the space?
Well, after six months, you have to start using it, yeah.
Yeah, this is, you're only getting, I'm only giving you a six-month lease.
I think he means technically, what should we do in order of getting things moving?
I have no idea where you go from here.
Okay.
I don't, 'cause I don't-
So you're gonna take it from here?
Yeah, all we know is after six months, you need to start using the garage.
Right, whatever we do in it, yeah, okay.
Okay, and then he would come back and-
After approval, after the approval period, 'cause they get shipped twenty, what is it, twenty-eight days?
How long is that, we have to wait twenty days before we could start?
So I S D doesn't have to go down and see her set up before she's-
Okay, so that, that was my question.
I bet the board of health didn't, I S D-
If there were, okay, thank you. If there were concerns of the board, I don't know if it would be of this board, sir, or of the Building Department, where they say that this isn't a clean space?
That's not-
I get, no, I'm, I'm trying to say, and then I'd, I'd be dealing with the, the Building Department.
That's right.
And I could tell them, I'll-
They could give you a, a book, this thick of stuff, you're gonna go do it, you might say, listen, it's not happening, honey.
No, that's what I'm trying to find out, if I could build a ten-by-twelve box with a roof, vent it and have a light in it.
That's all I S D has.
And then again, that's to them.
They could, they could deny you as well.
Yeah, and I do, I do understand, and I understand, this is the committee I started with first, because I can't get-
All I'm, all we're doing is giving you permission to use the space for six months, is what she's saying, and that's it.
That's right.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, okay, so we have to-
Motion made and seconded, call the roll. Two people max, two cli, two clients at a time, max?
No, one at a time.
One, no, yeah.
Only gonna be her.
Usually, for one session, it's usually like two to three hours, so I'm lucky if I can even get three people a day.
One customer at a time and-
Yep, and now the parking will be in the yard like we-
Reasonable hours, reasonable business hours.
Absolutely.
So we have a sunset, four hours, six months?
Yep.
Stipulation and one customer at a time and reasonable hours.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mrs. McCall?
Yes.
She's gonna stand.
Mrs. Curly?
Denied.
No. Mrs.? Mrs. Curly?
Denied.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Peter?
Yep.
Denied.
Yep, it's denied.
Denied.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So what'd you guys find out? Uh, found out that the office is closed. The doors are locked and lights are out. When's the next meeting?
Uh, what's it mean?
There's nothing I can do without that letter, guys, I apologize, I- You've already heard our presentation. I know I have, and they, they told me I would have the letter for this meeting, and believe me, I'm as unhappy as you are, trust me, because I'm the one standing there holding the bag, and back to being promised three times today that I would have it, so, I don't know what happened, um, but I'll tell you what, you will not have to wait for the next But I'll tell you what, you will not have to wait for the next meeting, 'cause I will find out what's going on tomorrow, and I'll contact you outside of the meeting, and we'll find out what's going on. Okay?
Okay.
Yep. Sorry about that, fellas, I... The last case this evening is nine-nine-oh-five-three-thirty-three-thirty-four Chatham Street. Not even gonna try. Okay. To permit the addition of two residential units and existing non-conforming structure on a lot in the business district with less than the required parking and parking spaces, not in compliance with section nine point oh. See you next week, next month. Oh, yeah, see you in a couple of weeks, I said, we got another one this month. See you in two weeks.
Today's the first.
Thank you, guys, sorry about that.
By far, one of the smartest people I've seen.
That's not gonna help you get approval, Colin.
Oh, no, it's not, it's not. I get amazed when I see something like that, yeah.
I'm just kidding, go ahead, guys, sorry about that, guys.
Good evening, board members, thank you for taking us on and giving us the continuance. I wanna begin by being fair to my client and the board, as our attorney is absent today. Due to some personal matters, we tried to call, we tried to continue this case. But as mentioned, you had asked for some set conditions to show you a new plan with a one-bedroom, and then, uh, I would, you know, wanna demonstrate that to you. And requesting also parking variance for one space, because we do have eight, uh, spaces on site. Otherwise, uh, if, 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 if you're allowing me to speak for the attorney or continue this on...
What do you guys wanna do? That's up to you guys. I, I'm happy to continue it if you guys wanna wait, or if you wanna go ahead and roll, it's up to you.
Again, I wanna be fair...
I'm sorry, if I knew you wanted to continue, I, you guys could've grabbed me before, I thought you guys were gonna go.
Yeah, I was trying to grab you before.
Sorry about that, next time, just...
Happy to look at this and see what you thought and figure it out.
I came in, I came in right, right before the meeting, but if you guys do wanna wait for the attorney, which, it's up to you, I mean, or if you wanna just say what you got, we kinda know what's going on, right? We kinda know the case, it was not, I don't think he's gonna, he's not gonna offer you any benefit, let's put it that way, I mean, if you guys are, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're just asking for variance for one space and parking. I mean, not to reiterate everything that the attorney said before, and that's what I don't wanna do, and I don't wanna miss anything either, I wanna represent him well and be fair to the board and have everything out on, it open. Again, that's the plan, it's showing one bedroom there, and I took out this bedroom in the neighborhood, so you walk in, you got a gigantic bedroom here, the one bedroom, they wanna keep this all, usually people want to go floor clean, like they wanna, you know, keep the bedroom and the bathroom together. This, these kitchens are all at the same level, so same money, keep the plumbing all together, it goes back, yeah, stacked, exactly, and then the side, the other side is exactly the same, one bedroom and one gigantic living room as well. No closets or anything, just one big roof with a living room at the corner of the building here. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, we're only, we have nine, uh, eight spots, the requirement is nine, so we're asking for variance for one spot.
Any questions?
No, none.
No, no questions?
No exterior work, right?
No, we're not doing anything, setting the building...
The siding will be exactly the same.
The siding, the, 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 the building has great walls structurally, the only thing that's gonna be like a high-end cosmetic, uh, build-out at the third, third level.
So, kinda to elaborate a little bit more into that topic, right?
So, we're looking at the public unit, uh, the public unit, not changed, structural change was the same, the only add would be that I would... These one, and, excuse me, this is Ricky, you'll get it, one of the other owners, the other owner was here before, so these two guys are gonna be living in both of these spaces, one in each, each spot. And they're gonna be commuting versus driving in as well, so, and that's what we kinda reiterated before.
Ms. Wall? Go ahead, Rick Carter?
Let me ask you a question, I mean, you guys have a pretty good rela, I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong, I'm really not too concerned with the parking, and the reason being is, you have that big apartment building right next, right across the street, which has a ton of room in it, 'cause I know a lot of people park there in the snow anyway, right?
We have an option to do auxiliary parking if worst came, the, worst came, the, worst.
I mean, I know a lot of people in the neighborhood park in that lot, 'cause it's so big, I'm just, I'm thinking of it the right way, right? You guys do have access to that lot, I mean...
There is an option, definitely.
So, I mean, the parking to me really doesn't, I was worried about the second bedroom, 'cause that's what the city council came, you know, kinda gave you, and you guys have rectified that situation, so I mean... Any other questions?
No.
Any questions? No?